Okay. Good evening. Tonight is a special meeting Madison District Public Schools. Today, I don't even know the date. Let's see, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, seven P M. Called order first on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by Miss Chambliss.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call, please.
Okay, we'll start with Rebecca Chambliss.
Here.
Cindy Holder.
Here.
Beth Scott.
Here.
Crystal Beaver.
Here.
Mark Holcomb.
Here.
Deborah Ott.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
Our present, we have Quorum.
Alrighty, next on the agenda, public comments. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board must make a request. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will not use this forum to discuss job-related topics. The Board of Ed accepts comments made during the public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many informational sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board will also work with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. And with that, Mary, do we have any hands?
Yes, we do. We have a Nanette Basler.
Okay, let's start with Nanette, please.
Nanette, did you want, she has to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Just so you know, it's difficult to unmute until you unmute us. Um, good evening, everyone. I feel obligated to speak up since a couple of board members wanted to paint a picture that isn't true in the last meeting. Where did that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars go that Board President and Board Secretary claims was squandered into the general fund by the previous superintendent and not accounted for? The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant was never intended for use at the high school for HVAC. It was a grant from the Michigan Economic Development Council for year-round schools. M D P S was transitioning M E S to a balanced calendar and used that to pay for HVAC. I'm one hundred percent sure that M D P S never even called them. They worked with M E D C and the construction management team, E Gilbert and Sons, for a bid, and then M E D C paid it directly. Also, in addition to the questions that our superintendent claimed would be answered after the high school tour, at least ten of my questions were not answered. One very important question was, what is the emergency action plan in case the building conditions reach the level that students and staff need to be moved to another location? I emailed the entire board and superintendent stating that my questions were answered. I have two current students at Madison. My email did not receive a response. I'm not surprised since this has become acceptable practice for the superintendent. This is not how you retain students or reassure families that the high school is safe like some of you claim. I would appreciate it if this Board of Education would start holding the superintendent accountable for doing his job. In closing, I want to thank the Board of Education for considering a bond. Clearly, we need it. I'm excited to see this process continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And anybody else?
I have a Ivana.
Ivana, hello, Ivana.
Hi. Um, hey, I'm speaking on behalf of the Madison Education Association, as usual. The Madison Education Association would like to extend our sincere gratitude for your coming together during the June eleventh board meeting and reaching a difficult decision to move forward with a bond proposal that will address critical infrastructure needs in the district. We value your differences and appreciate the time and effort you all devote to making our district better, and we understand the difficult job you all have. Like the students and their families, the teachers have been frustrated with the deterioration of our buildings. We're looking forward to working together with the families and the district to reach out to the community and pass a successful bond that will positively impact the district for decades by helping our students reach their ultimate potential. Please let us know how we can support your efforts moving forward. The M E A teachers are behind you, are grateful, are hopeful, and like you, wish the best for Madison District Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Ms. Kennedy.
I have a Tom Smith.
Okay.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Tom Smith. Here's my opinion. The people who attended the June eleventh, twenty twenty-one school board meeting saw a board who performed their responsibility and served the public. The administration did the same thing, presenting an infrastructure bond proposal that meets the needs of the building, of all the buildings, not just a high school. The plan covers the need-to-have, not the nice-to-have, like an auxiliary gym. This plan happened because the experienced members of the board held out for a complete infrastructure review instead of taking the first incomplete bond proposal that would have left many unmet needs. They focused on actual needs. They dealt with documented facts and information. They didn't pander to the public with wants or unproven fears. I'm proud of these trustees. They did this in spite of a few who focused on an unsupported biohazard problem, even though the high school was found to be satisfactory by experts. Some people bought in on an inadequate bond proposal from months ago that would have failed the district and taxpayers. How long before the district would have had to come back for another bond to fix the overlooked needs? Fortunately, the experienced trustees waited until a thorough assessment of the district's needs could be covered, and the new trustee saw the value of a complete set of facts. This board acted in everyone's best interest in spite of a few who choose to be uncivil or disrespectful. The board did what was right for all, not what was popular for a few. Make no mistake, the past administration and board's mismanagement put us here, documented by state, by the state and audits. And the reason, there's a reason we're going through this. We don't want to go back to the bad old days. Good things can happen when all trustees focus on the public's business at school board meetings. I commend all the trustees for coming together for a responsible plan and the administration for bringing it. It's still a big financial hit to taxpayers, but you've got the facts to back it up. If a bond or some version of it passes, homeowners can take comfort that their dollars are being responsibly spent when they pay their tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have an Annalee, Annalee Basler.
At the last meeting, there was an assumption that students are proud to represent Madison. May I remind you all again, I am a current student, and I am here to tell you all tonight that I am not proud to represent Madison. I am not proud to represent a school world with a board that is divided. I am not proud to be a student under the superintendent who on multiple occasions has made staff cry or was disrespectful to parents and students in private conversations about curriculum. I'm certainly not proud to represent Madison, especially with sports that are indoors, because other schools sees what Madison is really like on the inside, and it's disgusting, a disgrace, if you will. As I said before, if you cannot take care of it the correct way, you have one of three options: shut it down, fix it, or watch students leave. Since we are on the topic of students leaving, let me state the reasons leading up to why I made the decision to leave Madison. Lack of A P classes, no effort in maintaining a clean environment for students by high school, lack of student groups that main, that's main purpose is to influence student involvement, students' mental health played out to be humorous or joked about when brought up in private conversations by the superintendent, lack of communication, and special accommodations not being taken seriously, such as five oh four plans being pushed aside until the last minute. Now, from a student's perspective, it seems like we must beg for the bare minimum when it should already be taken care of, but most of the things I mentioned shouldn't even be a problem since as educators or workers of the district, they should already be done or taken seriously. Now, let's touch on the student groups. Madison Student Council teacher representatives do not listen to suggestions but run it on their own, or N H S, when a fundraising opportunity arises and isn't taken seriously and the fundraiser goes downhill, or other suggestions immediately shut down. If this continuously happens, why have these organizations open for groups? Organizations or groups open for students to attend if their suggestions are going in one ear and out the other? Madison is not a place to be proud of. Madison is unexplainably gross, and on top of that, the board is disrespectful to students, such as board members laughing at students while explaining their feelings on this busted school board, split four to three, and dramaful. They care more about politics than students. So to finish and to reply to that statement, no, we are not proud to represent Madison by any means.
Are you done?
She muted herself, so yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Didn't want to cut her off. Okay, next up.
I have Crystal Whitley.
Crystal, you're up.
Hi, I would like to address the board today about the education and everything else that's on. I, I greatly agree, appreciated that you guys are considering the bond. We really need that for the schools. Um, after hearing about the conditions and how worse they are than what I was told, I'm very disgusted because I went to Madison myself. I went to Madison from fourth grade until senior year, and I'm very disgusted at how that school is. I'm appalled. I mean, no student should be in that school at all. And about the teachers this year, I mean, I have a special needs brother, and I'm his voice today. They didn't help him. He should have graduated this year. They did not help him. I would like the board to do something about how the teachers retrain them. That's why we need that program that Mr. Dula had was talking about. He has told me all about it. We need that program for the teachers. We really do, and we do need this bond. So if you guys greatly appreciate it, approve it so it can be on the ballot in November. Instead of it being four to three, can it just be seven altogether saying yes? That is what I want, and I would like a better education for all these students. I mean, I have not gotten any of my questions answered of how we're going to better the education for the kids. Get rid of the computers and do it on paper. I mean, that's how the special needs kids know how to do it, is on paper. So if you guys can do that, I mean, I've talked to Mr. Dula had about the bond. I've talked to him about that program. We really need these two in school, and we need more electives for the kids. Bring back home economics, bring back shop, bring back O C C robotics, bring back art, I mean, the good art. Bring back all the other programs. We need these for the kids. We need drama, music, all of choir, all that stuff for the kids so they can strive and make a better life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mary, do we have anyone else?
No, there's no one else with a hand raised.
Okay. Uh, just do one more quick look. And with that, we move on to superintendent's report.
Madam President, I, I don't have anything individually, just the, um, the two items that are being presented before you.
Oh, okay. You had a whole separate line item, so I'm just reading the agendas presented. All right, next is the approval of capturing kids' hearts. And, um, I don't know, do you want to say anything about this? I don't have a motion in front of me, so.
I'll make the motion to discuss capturing hearts.
So you want to make the motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
And do we have a sec?
All set.
Mr. Holcomb, with that, we have discussion, please.
Madam President, if you don't mind, may I go first?
Absolutely.
Um, first, I'd like to ask Mr. Abdullah Hyde, did you get my questions that I sent early this morning?
You're muted, Andrew.
I did. Some of them we couldn't answer in time from this morning that you sent me some. I answered via the emails that I sent you as a whole group. Some of them were, require way more time than you gave me.
Okay, so, okay, so can we just go over my questions real quick? Um, for which ones? Because I don't know which ones those are because I didn't get a response. Um, my first one was, the two testimonials are from element, from elementary school teachers, I'm assuming. Um, do, do we have any other teachers from the middle school or high school that has testimonies?
So I answered that in the group, as, as I was advised by Rod Green not to answer board members directly, but to put it all in general email. So maybe that's why you felt.
I didn't, no, I, I.
Okay, so.
I didn't see that email.
Um, so the testimonials that we have are from the two elementary teachers.
Okay.
You have the two principals and myself. Those are the testimonials that we currently have. We don't have anyone else, um, that, that has currently participated in that program.
Okay, and my, another question was, or I had was, I would have liked to have seen the entire teaching staff from all the schools surveyed. I know there's not enough time, but do we have any, is there any feeling or ideas from other than the elementary school? Any talks of it in the junior higher, the high school, um?
We.
Ivana is here, so could maybe Ivana answer that? Is there any feedback from any teachers, how they feel about it? Could Ivana speak on that?
Sure. Mary, can you unmute Ivana?
All right.
See, I can't really speak on behalf of everybody. Everybody's really apprehensive because, like, we've had a lot of trainings in the past that were wonderful, but then we kind of abandoned them. This one looks like it has all of the, like, points of what we've had before, so things like community building, restorative justice, social emotional learning, all the things that we've been trying to do in this district for a long time. But I still, none of us know exactly what actual strategies are going to be implemented to make this happen. It'd be nice to know, but like, I'm, uh, personally, it is something that we need. I just don't know in this specific program, um, is, is the one that's going to make it happen for finally.
Okay, Ivana, uh, just, uh, I reached out to, um, Oakland Schools, um, and they told me that they used Castle, the Castle Organization, to provide a list of programs that, um, they would recommend. And I know that Kurt, that, uh, there's several of them on the list, which I sent to the board, some of the, I, I sent it to all board members, that, um, information. And I know that we've used ruler, the ruler approach in the elementary school, and I know that some of the things that we are still using are like the mood meter, the feeling words, and things like that. So I too have that concern, um, that, first of all, capturing kids' hearts is not on Oakland Schools' recommended list. Um, but there are several on there that do pre-K through twelfth grade, and I was just wondering why we didn't look on the Oakland Schools' preferred list. So I guess my question would be to Mr. Billahide. Um, first of all, were you aware that that capturing kids' heart is not on the Oakland Schools' preferred list? And are we using the ruler approach still in the elementary school?
Oakland Schools has partnership, strategic partnerships, and they offer certain ones. Here's an example. They don't support power schools, except, you know, but power schools is pretty credible. So just because Oakland Schools doesn't support a program does not mean that, um, it's not a good program. Oakland Schools has their partners, and we take advantage when we can. And then as the instructional leaders in the district, we present to the board our recommendations. I've been, I've been in education, Ms. Scott, since oh one. I, I too have seen things come and go in the flavor of the month, and what's this flavor and this flavor? And some things go by the wayside, um, including here when I was here as a teacher. However, we're presenting you this recommendation after, you know, having us attend the training, having the testimonials, having the research, that's the one we recommend. Now, if the boards, it's, it's the board's prerogative if they don't like it, and all we could do is just make our recommendation. So that is our recommendation to you. If you don't like it, we respect that, we honor that, and you have that right.
Well, okay, so I'm, I'm not denying that you went to it. I understand that you went to it, but, so, there six people I know for sure that are with this, that are all for the program. I'm just saying that I would have liked to have seen the teachers be more involved, the parents be involved, and the students be involved, and not, I feel that this has just been thrown at us. And again, I feel that we have had other programs in here, and there are programs that Oakland Schools has that are recommended, and the ruler approach is one of them that I still think we're using lots of those good things, and why we wouldn't just do more research and get surveyed and more input from the teachers, from the teachers that are going to be actually using the programs.
So we can't, we can't present it to the teachers until we know we have the approval of the board, that's one. Two, we've been researching this for the last three and a half months. If you recall, when I attended that meeting, was that in April?
Yes, and I've been.
It's been, it's been in the works for us, so as we present it to you, we must have four, five, six months' worth of research in it. Now, we can't share with the teachers until we have the blessing of the board. So, you know, what good is it if we start talking to the teachers about it? And then here we are, and then we shoot it down, and it's a waste of time for us, you know, presenting information that is not supported by the board.
Well, and, and just as you, when you went, when you sent us the update, that's when I started researching it and looking for testimonials, which is, there, of course, on the site, capturing kids' hearts, it's glowing reports, but there are several more not as positive, um, reviews on it. And I just hate to see spending money on something that's just going to get put to the wayside again, and if the teachers aren't all in, or the parents, because there's some things on here that I wouldn't be, I wouldn't feel that would be comfortable for my child, and, um, I just think we would, we would need more, we, we would have to do further studies on it. It's only in my opinion. I am one out of six board members here, so that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see all of the board members, so I'm going to have.
Rebecca raises, is raising her hand.
Thank you. Rebecca, you're next.
Um, Mr. Abdullah had, what, how did you and Ms. Hemingway go to this seminar? Like, what brought it to you? What made you go to it? And what made you decide that this program above others that are presented to you is the one that you believe is the best next step for M D P S?
So in two, two thousand nineteen, I did a, I did a, a opening day summit with, with, um, with all the staff. I'm sorry, in two thousand twenty, um, and it was capturing the kids of every, um, you know, student, family that comes into our, um, through our doors. And I believe I had shared that PowerPoint with the board at that time. And then, um, earlier this year, the elementary staff was looking for social emotional. We knew that we, we needed to provide social emotional, uh, coming out of this pandemic. And, um, we knew there were some, uh, social emotional, um, requirements that the kids needed just to help them recover from this last year and a half of pandemic that we are just coming out of. And so we were being proactive in trying to, um, discover opportunities to provide social emotional. Last year, we were lucky, uh, because Oakland Schools had paid for social emotional, uh, program, and, and we, you know, provided that, but we needed something more extensive, more, um, of a program that we owned, that we spearheaded, that we had, um, lead trainers, so as if, um, a teacher happens to leave, then we would have trainers that would train the new ones. And we just thought that this was a, a good one, if, if fit, our, I know it fits my, um, vision of why I went to education. If, if you don't have a kid's heart, doesn't matter if you're a great Spanish teacher, a great algebra teacher, it doesn't matter. And, and I, I was successful as a teacher with that strategy. I've, I have personally witnessed teachers being successful because they connected and, and they captured the heart of that kid. And when a kid loves you, they will perform for you. And, and the results are, are there, they're, they're, share those results with us. Um, and so to me, compare that with other programs that are available, this, this encompasses everything. I've participated in P B I S, Positive Behavior Supports. I've done that. I've done the be attitudes, right, the be kind, be, I've done a lot of those since oh one. Uh, and a lot of them have come and go, um, and this one, I hope, that we institute with fidelity in that we, we take ownership in it. We're small enough that we can, um, have proven results rather quickly. It does not take us multiple years to see results, um, in, in the district this small.
Is.
Deborah Ott?
Yeah. Um, I know the, the cost of this program, but I was, as I was reading through it several times, it said that the, um, travel expenses are not included. Is there a, did we discuss, is there a, a maximum on travel expenses?
It said eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. I think we discussed that. And then did you see year two's only thirty-seven thousand? Again, Esther funding does cover social emotional. Esther funding does cover social emotional, uh, programming needs, so it does not come out of our general fund.
Gloria. Madam President, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Gloria.
Now, is Esther Fund something that we're temporarily going to have because of COVID? Or is that going to come back every year?
You're going to have it for three years.
So what happens after three years? Is that going to have to be put into the budget?
No, it, it's a, it's, no, after that will be self-sustaining. I mean, really, you could be self-sustaining after year one, but if, if you want to do the, the second half of thirty-seven thousand, after that is self-sustaining because we will have, uh, teacher trainers. So if you look at the Stephen Covey one that I sent you, that one is a reoccurring. This one is not a reoccurring fee. Year one and year two. Stephen Covey's one, you have to do for three years, and then you have to buy additional years, and they average between fourteen, nineteen dollars on, on year three to five per child, or per child and per employee.
All right, um. I, I just had a question, um, personally based on a conversation that we had Friday and then the, the follow-up today, so we would be doing, um, an education program, the teachers have the option to buy in or not. And, and tell me if I'm wrong, just so that we're following through this and everyone understands. Um, M E A, it, and I guess the other part of that is typically as these things are brought in, and I honestly don't know the answer to this, as these other programs come in, are they simply just, um, continuing add and they're given? And the decisions made by the superintendent or the board or M E A? And is this just kind of the normal practice? And is this just kind of the normal practice? Uh, I'm a little confused on. That part of it.
Teachers and employees don't have an option whether they buy in or not. They either get with the program that we're instituting. Or they find a, a, a place that is more accommodating, right? So if you don't, if you don't follow the strategic plan or the mission and vision of capturing hearts. Then you're kind of an outlier of, you're, you're, you're refusing to participate in something that we're making mandatory. Right? So we have to provide every teacher thirty hours of professional development.
Right.
We have to. The, it's the district's prerogative what that professional development is. Is, is our choice, the board's choice of what, what they, what they bring in. Now, the board allows us to do the research and present you something that we feel like we could get behind, especially with. What we feel right now, it's, it's a lot of animosity and a lot of anger. We feel like this could bring people together.
But, but, but it's mandatory and, and. Rebecca, you, you'll have the floor now. That was the one thing I wanted clarification on because the M E A rep. Um, said she wasn't real familiar and so I was just wondering and. Um, I'm thankful for her that she's at least being honest with us. So we all know, not that you're not, but just so we all know. What it is that we are agreeing to. And then is there a way to put a travel limit? They say they suggest that the travel limit is X, Y, Z. Um, if indeed this passes, I guess I would wanna see that in hard numbers now. Cause how could we control that? Oh, you, you know what I mean that?
Well, it's, it's.
What is usual, e- excuse me, I was just gonna finish. What is usual or customary may not be what's recommended here. So I guess, um, that was just. The other thing that I was thinking of, but, um, with that Rebecca had a question, so can we go to her next, please?
I was just gonna say, it's a little bit harsh to say get with it or basically leave. That's a little bit harsh. Couldn't there be possibly a teacher who does the training? Doesn't fully feel like this is the type of teacher they wanna be? And then there could be, I'm not saying completely go against the grain to where, you know, it's disruptive to the program, but. If somebody doesn't fully buy into this, if they're not feeling this is the type of teacher they want, I wouldn't. Want a staff member to feel like they have to adopt. A culture to be allowed to be employed as much as it should be, they wanna be in it, but if they don't, they have that option. I don't know if that makes sense the way I'm wording it, but I'm just saying it just seems a little harsh to say. Deal with it, take the training, do what we want or leave.
Well, well, we're not, the, the reality is when an organization institutes a program or process or procedures. The reality is, it's our expectations that you follow it, right? Now, there might be some people that go against the grain, but we hope that as we present it, that we'll have buy in. But I've never witnessed one hundred percent buy in. It's our job as instructional leaders. To ensure that everyone that is addressing the students has the shared mission and vision. Of capturing the hearts, right? So capturing the hearts, i- i- it's not just face value, right? It's really transforming the way you educate kids. It's not. Li- listen, are there teachers that really love? Um, linguistics. When I was hired here in two thousand thirteen. Um, I asked, even though I was being interviewed here as a teacher, I asked the question, why did you go into education? And if I hear the answer of, I really love linguistics, I really love math, really love science. That's wonderful. But we could find anyone to do that. But if someone wants to say, I really wanna help kids grow, I really want to transform. And I don't care how I do it or what subject area I do it. My goal is, I wanna help kids get better. I want them, I want them to be successful in the future. And yes, I'll use science to get through it, or I'll use Spanish. And so those are the kind of people that we want in our organization. And I, I believe we have that. But the question was asked, what happens if someone? You cannot just say, oh, you know, I'm not gonna do it. I, I'm not gonna do it. Can you imagine if I, if you tell me, Mr. Abdullah, we're gonna adopt this and I say to you. Oh, I don't feel like doing it. I, I don't, I don't buy in, in, into your vision for where the district's going. I'm not gonna do it. You don't have a choice. You either buy in or you find another place that is more fitting for you. Now, I'm not telling people, hey, there's a door, get out. But at the same time, we're gonna implement it with fidelity. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was like an option of a teacher obviously wants to support the other staff and everything, but they don't feel comfortable doing it. I didn't know if maybe. They would have the option to not be negative about the capturing hearts, but to. You know, if they're a great teacher and they're connecting with kids on their own and they just don't feel comfortable with this, I would just hate to see them feel like they didn't spit anymore. That's all.
Madam President, may I? This is Beth.
Well, actually, um, Crystal Beaver had her hand up for a while.
Okay, I'm sorry, but, um, just to let you know that, uh, well, I can put my hand up too if you want.
Okay, thank you. Beth, you can go after Crystal. Crystal, you have the floor.
Um, I just wanted to make one comment and then I also had a question. Um, I know we got those testimonials. And the one teacher I don't really have a lot of, um. You know, experience with, but I will say the other teacher that had sent in her testimonial, I personally know of three families that. Stayed this school year specifically so that their child could have another year with that teacher. Just because of how they've captured and. Really connect with their students, since we have now the swinging teachers, we are in the same class for fourth and fifth grade. They wanted their students to have her again for fifth grade. Um, not saying the other teachers not just as wonderful, I just don't know her personally. Um, and then my question, uh, Mr. Abdullah Had is, I know that. For next school year, this would cover the whole thirty hours of P D, but going forward, would some of this still cover P D? Would it be like implemented or would we come up with?
I, I believe. I believe if it, if it's gonna be successful, it can be one and done. It can't be one year professional. It has to be ongoing, repetitive. Um, instill and then restill, um, and just reteaching it. Because the first time, you might get fifty percent of people buying in. Then second one, you know, so the more you do it. The more, um, it sinks in and resonates with, with people. So I believe that. If we are successful with year one, that's why we only presented year one, that year two would be another thirty hours of P D. As well focused on that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Scott?
Um, okay, first of all, um, couple of statements and then a question from Mr. Villa Had. First of all, making things mandatory or get out, whatever the words were, we really can't afford to lose any more staff, first of all. The other thing is capturing a child's heart and love should be organic. We can't teach that. It, it just is. So that's, that's one thing I have to say about that. Also, I feel that this capturing kids' heart, I have not heard anything how this is going to help. I mean, I know we hear about the, how the pandemic has affect, affected the children in elementary school. However, we, we're, I haven't heard much of how we're gonna help the junior high and high school students. That are indeed greatly affected. We just sent out two classes, I don't think was prepared for the world. The past eleventh and twelfth graders, I don't think they were prepared as well as they should have been. And it not necessarily because it's our fault, it's because of the pandemic. And I think we should also be focusing towards Wilkerson and Madison High School. Those students, I feel are really getting lost in all of this. Yes, I know Mr. Villa Had has said that we wanna start early, we wanna. You know, do all these great things, but we're leaving behind the junior high and high school. So I'd like to see what we're doing for them. That's all.
Um, I, I just wanna correct, I, I don't believe I said get out, but.
Whatever word you used.
Right.
That was my words. I just, just so, my words was I said, cause I was just kind of making it a quick little summary of what he said. So I apologize if.
It's just the, the reality in, the reality is, if we are to be successful. We all have to be all in, right? We cannot have. Six different visions of where we think our kids should be, right? We should have single vision. Single goal of how we interact, how we address students, how we teach students. So as students transition from building to building, it is more cohesive. So the students and parents could be accustomed to the approaches and the styles from building to building. This will allow a K twelve. Uh, culture, Beth, we're not just doing elementary. I just gave you the testimonials. This is a K twelve program. For all students.
Understandable. And I've also done, like I said, research for a few months. And there are K, pre-K through twelve programs that have high ratings of their positive action. Uh, Michigan Model of Health, Tribes Learning Communities, which involve the parents. In it, there are other programs that Oakland Schools have high ratings. And I've gone beyond Oakland Schools and looked into the testimonials outside of Oakland Schools. And I've talked to teachers and I've talked to parents. I, I too have done my research. Just so that you're aware, I have done my research.
Respect that, I respect that.
And I shared it with the Board of Education.
You didn't, you didn't share it with me, so I.
No, I, no, I'm sorry. I said I shared it with the Board of Education.
Okay.
Okay, I cannot see Mr. Holcomb. Do you have any?
No, I'm listening.
Okay, uh, anybody else have anything?
And I asks, uh, something, Ms. Holder.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, it's kinda not related to this, but it is, since this would be covered under S E L, um. Is there a way that we can have, I know that we're in charge of, you know, choosing the curriculum. And I know back, I believe it was before I was on the board for sure, but back in June or July, the board had approved. Um, a few hundred thousand dollars worth of new curriculum. Is there a way that we can get some sort of spreadsheet broken down with what school? Has what curriculum? Because I know that they just recently approved, um. The, uh, curriculum at the elementary school that we haven't had for several years. So just so that we know where we're still lacking and what we need to kind of concentrate on.
Yeah, I'll have that for you. I could, I could, I could tell you all the, all the curriculum, um. Programs that we added and what's still remaining or what's in, in our targets for the next three, three, four months. I could share that with you.
Thank you.
Madam President, along with that, since we keep going around the words funds and Esser funds. I really would like to see it on the next agenda, what our Esser funds monies are going to. What the, our options are, what we, I mean, I know we've, it said what we can and what we can't, but I would like to actually see where our grants. Title, you know, grant, Esser monies, where that's going. I know Mr. Abdullah had said that they would do that. But I would like to put that on the agenda as a action item for the Board of Education because. We can keep going around the word Esser funds and grant money, but honestly. Can anybody name the last five things that we approved for or wasn't approved for, for Esser funds? I would just like the Board of Education to be aware of, you know, what we're purchasing, what we're asking for. That would be, if we could add that to the agenda along with Crystal's. I think we need to take action on these items that we're requesting these things so that they're actually followed through with.
I'm not sure what the action is that you want, you want us to say.
We would make a motion, we would have to vote whether or not we had. We would be given a monthly report that says what the.
So you're asking for a monthly report?
Monthly report. And then we would have to do, and I, I would think that we would act, need an action item for Crystal's request on. The, whenever the, like, we would have to come up with the report for the curriculum, what each school has. And then it would have to be updated and sent back out to the Board of Education whenever it changed. I mean, I'm just assuming that's what you want, Crystal, right?
Yeah, I kinda want, like, almost like an inventory type of what we have. And then what we need to kind of focus and tune into on the next several months or year. I know that, um. I mean, I don't wanna, I know that we need more curriculum in some areas, and I know that we have purchased a lot. That we have not had in the past, which I think is wonderful, and I know a lot of teachers are really excited for. Um, so just to see that, that way we can look and see, okay, the elementary has this, the junior high has this, the high school has this. We really need to focus on math here or social studies here, that way we. Kinda have a path going forward of our goals as far as curriculum.
We, we could get you that. I don't.
And if we, if we could get a summary, please of the. That would be.
Her funds would be Edwina.
Yeah, but if, if she could, um, get that ready for us for her meeting, that would be great.
Madam President, I just wanna, um, speak on behalf of Edwina. You know, right now she's in a time crunch on getting you, uh, a final budget, plus, plus produce you a new budget. Plus she's short staff, so if you could allow her a month. Just so she could get all these things out the way. There's a lot going on in the finance department right now, um, and they're very short staff.
Would that be a matter of just running a report, Mr. Abdullah? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that?
You could unmute her, uh, Mary, and she could speak for herself.
Oh, she's, Dr. Hill.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, no, it's not, it's not as simple as running a report. Um, you know, uh, we would have to. Uh, first of all, Esser, this, in, the Michigan Department of Education has not allowed us. To apply for all Esser funding at this time. We're, we are, we've only applied for Esser one and a partial for Esser two, because that's all M D E made available. They have not made available the full amount of Esser two that the district was expecting. But we're supposed to receive, that was one point three million or Esser two. We haven't been able to apply for that funding. Uh, at this time at all, because the Michigan Department of Education. Has not made it available for districts to apply for that money at that, at this time. What we're currently doing, we're, we're keeping a list of some things, you know, that we would like to, uh, fund Esser two with. You know, for example, um. Uh, you all were talking about the capturing kids' hearts for seventy three thousand. I was able to put that. And the Esser two funding, because you know, they made about five hundred thousand dollars available for us to apply for now. But the rest of the, you know, one point three mil- million that we were supposed to get minus the five hundred thousand. They have not made that available for us to apply for. So no, it's not that simple. We would have to. Give you a spreadsheet of what we would like to use with the Esser two funding. And that, the rest of the Esser two funding and the Esser three funding when it comes available, so that we can apply for these different things.
But in the meantime, it's an expense.
Yes.
Funds from our general fund.
Exactly, and that's how, uh, grants are now. You know, in the past, you used to be able to, um, get the grant money upfront. You know, for these major federal grants, no more. It's now a reimbursement. You know, we, uh, spend the money first and then I, you know, I have to supply. Uh, the Michigan Department of Ed was supporting documentation to be reimbursed for the money. You know, but like I said, they haven't even made Esser three available for us to apply for. And they only made a small portion of Esser two available for us to apply for at this time.
And, uh, I was just gonna ask one question and then you can. So, so where we're at with Esser one money or maybe we could show what's already been.
I can show that, yes.
Okay, um, and Ms. Scott, who had you have the floor?
I was just gonna say, thank you, Dr. Hill. Um, when you send whatever you have, can you also do an email on everything you just said? Cause now I'm even more confused.
Sorry about that. Yes, I can put that in writing for you. And, uh, like Angel said before, you know, my budget materials are due to you by Wednesday, so let me get that out of the way first. Because I'm short staff, I had two staff members, you know, take other positions and, you know, other districts. So, you know, let me give that to you first by Wednesday. And then, you know, I can get, get, you know, summarize the Essers for you.
Oh, is, uh, Dr. Hill, I was just gonna ask you, um, would you be comfortable by the board meeting, uh, the regular board meeting come July? Is that enough time?
That is plenty of time.
So as a board member, I'm. So as a board member, I'm saying that that would be fine. I just wanted to um, have a monthly report. Are you okay to give a monthly report to the Board of Education?
Hey, I, I would love to. That's, that's, that's no problem.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And uh, Crystal Beaver, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Atmest first. Oh, I'll go after her.
I don't even see her.
I guess my, my remark is sort of a moot point right now. Since Edwina already spoke, but I don't mean to be combative, but uh, are we teetering on micromanaging? With having her. Tell us where these funds are being taken from and spent. I mean, that, that's part of her job. The Chromebooks and stuff, when we, we were asked to get those, we were told this will be Esser money. Uh, it was Esser one or whatever. Um, I just don't want to, to, to get into micromanaging. I don't want to. And I think that we're teetering and micromanaging on Edwina's job at this point. It's just my opinion.
But I think, I think just giving a summary of where the money's been spent could be informative. I don't know. None of us were in a direction for it, in my opinion, but um, everybody else can speak their mind. Uh, Crystal, go ahead.
Um, I was just going to kind of add to that, has there, which you don't have to answer that now, by July is fine. Is there anything, I know there's been concerns by the community that, you know, the magic word is Esser and we just approve it. Is there anything that we have thought that the board was approving for Esser? Funds or whether it was gears that ended up not being approved? Or would you come back to us if something was not approved that we had thought?
You know what? We do the vetting upfront. You know, we would never come to you and um, tell you something would be grant funded. And we know that we can't get it funded. So no.
Okay, I appreciate that, just for clarification for myself and.
Madam, Madam President, when you're finished, go ahead.
The topic was uh, capturing kids' hearts. We're, we're over here now.
Yes, but it's being paid with Esser, so I just wanted to make sure.
This is, and this is the Board of Education meeting, and this is where we are to discuss it. So I'm just, my, in my opinion, this is not micromanaging. This is making sure that we do our due diligence in the district. And funding money and Esser money and any money that the Board of Education is being asked to vote upon, I think we're responsible for. Thank you.
Okay.
And I will add this. Whenever we bring things to the board, we always tell you what funding source we, we're gonna take it from. Whether it's, you know, grant funding or Esser funding, you know, so you can do your due diligence upfront.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Holcomb, go ahead.
Well, so Edwina, there's no way that Esser funds can come back and say, no, you, we're not okay.
No, because they provide us with a list of items that are approvable. And, you know, I would never bring anything to this board that's not on the list. You know, uh, we have access to our consultants, so we can get a pre-approval, you know, before we bring anything to the board. So no, you know, we're not gonna do that. That's a bad practice.
All right, thank you.
So, do we have any other questions about capturing hearts? And I don't see Rebecca.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, and I don't have a motion in front of me, so.
You did, I hit the motion and Mr. Holcomb was the supporter.
Yep.
No, I, just the verbiage of it. I, I have that, but I don't have the verbiage.
Well, the, the recommended motion was recommend that the Board of Education approve the social emotional program, capturing kids' hearts. Um, motion was made by Beth Scott and seconded by Mark Holcomb.
Okay, no other questions? Call for the vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
No.
Motion passes five two.
Okay. And with that, we move on. And um, again, I don't have a motion.
Then next, I can, I'll help you here Cindy. The next item is the approval of draft of preliminary qualification application. So it was recommended the Board of Education approve the draft preliminary qualification for the November bond as being presented. That was, that was the P, the draft PQ application that was sent to you.
Okay, President, I'll be the maker.
Okay.
Chair, I'll support it. Sorry, Mr. Holcomb.
All right, Beth Scott was the maker, Rebecca Chambliss was support, and now we have discussion. Uh, Gloria, go ahead.
I don't have, because I don't have hard copies. All I had was what was on, on the iPad. So I can't see that, because I'm on my iPad zooming. What was the total number for the bottom line of that?
The project total, I believe, was eleven, one oh five. That was the project one that we discussed. And all in, I believe, was eleven four, all in. That's with all your fees and treasury. Uh, let me just look at it right here.
So, Mr. Dula had, why were those fees and costs not added in the original?
They were, they were.
Oh, well, I'm looking, I have architectural fees, C M fees and costs. So the bottom line being eleven, one oh five. And some, the way we added another 400,000 in.
Be- because you didn't look at the, probably, we didn't look at the whole application. You looked at uh, detailed parts of the application, uh, where it showed you the breakdown. But if you go down, if you go down.
Uh, I looked at, no, I looked at the one you sent us. But I was working off the hard copy we approved on Friday.
Right.
And the hard copy we approved on Friday said eleven one.
Well, you didn't vote, you didn't, you didn't vote on anything on Friday, correct?
No.
No, you didn't put on anything.
If I said vote, then I, I'm saying agree, maybe. But um, if I use the word vote, that's a mistake. All I'm saying is, we agreed to one number and now it's. Um, a few hundred thousand dollars more.
You agreed to.
Half of a roof.
You, you agreed to 11,001,05, comma, one, 155. That's total project cost, correct? And that was what was presented to you on page seventeen. So if you allow me to share my screen on page seventeen, you'll see all the construction contingencies, architecture fees, et cetera. However, you have. Uh, treasury and bond issuance. And uh, let me see what page that is. And if you could unmute Michael, he could also explain. RJ couldn't be here today. I'm trying to find what page that's on.
Is it Michael Livendale?
Yes.
Page five, Angel. Is the, yeah, the bonding cost.
And unfortunately, I can't look at what you guys are looking at. I, you want to see. But why, why would it not have been put on the original um, hard copy that we were looking at Friday? When we're looking at costs and fees that were added, why was that not a part of the total?
It, it was in there. I think you were looking at the project. So you have two different, you have the project bonding capacity. Right? So you have total bond and then you have project bonds, because there are costs in issuing a bond and selling treasuries and. That was in there in the original one. But what we shared with you, let me see if I could share my screen. Can you see this? What we shared with you yesterday was the breakdown on page.
Keep going.
Right here.
Right, yeah.
Right?
Just a scratch.
Now, if you look at, that's project cost, one, one, one oh five, one fifty five. Nothing has changed there. But there is a cost to sell treasuries and sell bonds. And the treasury, if the bond is successful, then treasury gets, uh, there's a fee for treasury if the bond ends up being successful. All of that was included in the original too, if you look at the whole packet.
It, it, I'm telling you, the packet we got with two hours had, we were working off this one hard copy. And when I was looking at numbers, I was not looking at plus additional fees.
Michael, what page is all, all the fees broken down?
Page five, Angel, um, of the PDF, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's up there in the P F M. Madam President, if I may, I understand how that could have caused some confusion. We were, you know, from my side, obviously, I was just trying to work with you all to price the construction side. What RJ would say is, you know, the moment he knows the price of the construction, then he can price the rest of the bond. So in this case, there's 207,000 dollars in total bond issuance cost and another um, 88,000 in other costs. So it totals about just under 300,000 of an additional cost for the non-bond issue.
So the bond is not going to be for 11,105, the bond is going to be, that's taken to the people, 11,400.
Correct.
That's different.
It's still a nominal increase. It's still the same project cost, Ms. Holder. The project cost that we presented to you is the same. In every bond, when you sell bonds and treasuries, there are fees. It's not like you can decide.
That you should have put it in here, is all I'm saying, Angel. It's like with the contracts. We need to see the total cost. That's the difference between my request and what you thought we wanted. Anybody else? I, I can't see anybody. So, does anybody else have a question? Uh, Chambliss, go ahead.
Mr. Bill had, just because it's been asked like about a thousand times over the weekend. So if we, if the bond goes through the November ballot and it's voted yes, construction will start the day after or within, you know. A couple of days after, even before the funding comes through, construction will start. And so that the kids that are in school for the 2021, 22 school year will see construction happening right there in November. Yes. That's what, that's what.
She's muted, Mr.
That's what he said.
That's what they said.
Mr. Dula had muted.
It was on November third.
No, it does not start instantly like that. It does not start instantly. Uh, they have, the, the, the day after. I think Michael from Performance Services said they start on their stuff right away. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael. You start on your stuff right away.
Yes.
And they actually start working March, is what I have.
Please muted.
I am muted.
Yes, excuse me, everybody. Yeah, they, um, so RJ explained to us that the funding for the bond wouldn't be available until January. We have a draw schedule in there. What a draw schedule is, you know, when you charge money and that kind of ties into your construction schedule. So we would, um, we would start engineering and designing and finalizing um, bid packages, et cetera. There's a lot of engineering. Once the bond gets approved, that has to be done, pulling licenses, all that's, that and so forth. So our basic schedule for this would be construction from January, starting in January of 2022, finishing the majority of construction. September of 2022, and, and there'd still be some, you know, odds and end work going on through October and November. But all the spaces would be occupiable and ready back for school in that timeframe.
Okay, so the construction wouldn't start until January of 22, but it would be completed in the year 22.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody, okay, so they, we would, you know, the goal would have almost all construction done by September. But there's always punch list items that have to be done, painting, small items, things like that in the end. Nothing's perfect.
Michael, this is Beth Scott. My notes have, from RJ, is that he would, that he would start on his end and construction would start in March. That's what I have in my notes.
Yeah, and it, no, um, so RJ confirmed it with me earlier, because I had to do a draw schedule for him. He said the funding would be available in late January. And then, you know, for us, we have to do about 30 days worth of work before we charge you. So you know what I mean? So it'd be okay for us to start billing in February. We built the draw schedule around that.
Well, the actual physical building start will be sometime in February.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I thought you said January, Michael.
Well, I mean, with, yeah, yeah. Physic, I mean, a lot of it upfront will be ordering equipment, storing it, you know what I mean? So we can lock in the prices and things like that. And there's a lot that we'll start, a few things we'll start doing second shift. Uh, but you know, we don't want to interrupt the education. So the heavy construction will go in, in June. But um, there's some things we can do with the heating system and the electrical upgrades at night that will, will do. It, I mean, I hate to say it, that's almost off-season for us, so it's pretty advantageous to do a lot of electrical work in February, March.
I believe Rebecca has her hand up.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Um, Mr. Dula had, in the event that they start construction or they're doing something to the building and they decide that they need, for any reason, the school like needs a little more extensive work, something they find they didn't expect. Will the bond automatically cover those expenses? And if it was bigger than what they suspected and they open it up and it's detrimental in any way to health. If they did say the kids couldn't be educated there anymore, where, would the kids go to Wilkinson temporarily? And would the bond cover it?
I think Performance Services covers it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael. Part of your um, benefit of partnering with Performance is that you guarantee. You guaranteeing there's no additional costs to complete the job, correct, Michael?
So here's the great part about working with us. After the November bond pass, after the ballot passes in November. That's why we'll start a lot of our engineering then. And we'll literally give you, you know, extreme detail. I mean, we'll give you about probably somewhere close to 400 pages of detail of what will happen in the construction project. And we'll assume all risk for anything that we've engineered. Now, if we run into something that wasn't part of the original project, we, you know, that we would point out to Angel. Um, that may occur, for example, you might, I mean, we might find something. For example, under roof decking. I mean, we have an allowance in here to even replace some of the roof decking at the high school, because the leak has been so bad. The decking's probably rusted. Um, and that's one of those things you don't know. And that's why we're carrying a little bit larger contingency, um, and a little bit larger C M fees, because we have contingencies in there too. You know, we're in, we're also in a pretty high, high um, price increase right now. So we've priced this pretty conservative, Rebecca, so that we should be safe. But again, and, and you know, the moment we get the bond passage in November, that's the, all the things we'll be detailing out through the month of November and early December. And so that we can all go into the, the Januaries, February's, we start the project with a great confidence of exactly what we're gonna do. Exactly what we're responsible for. And as Angel said, at that point, we take 100% guarantee for no change orders. So if we engineered something incorrectly, or if we didn't discover that, if we said we were only gonna replace, you know, X amount of wiring and you had more wiring. We would have to provide that to you. So there'd be a lot of meetings um, for all of us once the bond passes. And, and I can, you know, I can do some presentations for you all over the summer here to explain to you that process. It's a pretty involved process that we go through for design to, to reduce mistakes, speed up the construction process. Because the quicker we go to, the less you pay. So, you know, it's, and it's in our best interest to do construction very quickly. And I think, given the scope and the parameters of this project, um, it shouldn't be, you know, there's not a lot of risk items there. And then as part of that too, as we finalize our engineering, we will give you a list of everything that's gonna happen with the buildings for the next 15 years. So for example, with that 1.1, you could say, hey, here's things that may occur, you know, we'll give you. You know, we haven't looked at some of the other buildings. We'll give you things that may age out. And later, when you go for, if you do go for a sinking fund, you would have, that way too, you'd have a complete facility list. And you'd be able to say, if you give us a five-year sinking fund, here's a five-year plan. So we'll work with you hand in hand during this and on the back end of this. And I should say too, once we install all the equipment for a full year, we will monitor your building and come back and check on things to make sure it works. once we install all the equipment for a full year, we will monitor your building and come back and check on things to make sure it works. It's pretty easy to say the heat works when I install it in July. Um, so we should come back in November and January and March and things like that to make sure the heat's working. I, I, there's a lot going on. Angel's had the, you know, and, because of COVID, we haven't met with a lot of you all in person, but we'd love to do, you know, maybe some meetings and, and give you guys an education on our process. Angel's been really great about working with us, cause, um, our whole focus is to, to take the risk off of the school and put it on us to deliver the project you're promised and make sure that, you know, the taxpayers' money is well spent.
Thank you.
Crystal, go ahead.
Um, I just have two quick questions, and sorry, this is my first process going through this. Um, would the company itself that's doing the construction, would they be the ones to offer the warranty on the work? And then to, um, I know that we've kind of budgeted high to where if we run into additional expenses, what happens if a project comes in below that amount?
Yeah, so at that case, you can, we did not know this and, and, um, um, RJ did check on it. If you have extra bond funds at the end, you can sit back against the principal or you could use it for other work at the school buildings.
Wait, is, how is, how is that, that, because it had been in the past, you could only do the work that you were asking for. So under what circumstances are you now saying, because that was kind of the problem that we got into with Madison Elementary, is they'd made, or, or other projects, or something very uh, unspecific, which made the accountability of the money, uh, rather murky.
Yes, and, and, I mean, the state is, the state will work with you and the, you know, sometimes too, the bonds generate more revenue than was anticipated. So, you know, the interest rate may end up being better than what RJ currently has calculated, say, the day he sells it. So, there's a lot with that, and we can go back through with the state, you know, in this case, in this case, they would want us to only do these broad, these categories that we've described here. And like you said, we didn't use kind of broad, empty-ended categories, we used very specific things.
Right, right. We had to return in the past.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, you could use it against a payoff of principal or.
Right.
You know, I mean, the, if you wanted, you know, in this case, we do have classroom innovation, so you could, you could use it, for example, on like flooring or something different for the classrooms, you know what I mean? You you can always spend money on classrooms, I hate to say it, but I mean, it just depends what you do.
Yeah, but that's not part of our list.
No, and, and we're, Michael, uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be adding anything, just to, just to make it where everyone is clear. If I get additional money, we will give it back. So what you have presented is the work that we're doing. That way, there is no confusion. I will not spend a penny more than what I'm presenting to you. And if there's extra money generated, we will send it back, we will pay back the principal, and, and that could be the end of that discussion.
And I'll tell you this, so again, working with us is different. You will know the exact cost and what we're committed to providing before we start work in January. So, yeah, we could all honestly meet in January and say, here's how much it's gonna cost to do the project, this is what PSI is guaranteeing, so we do have XYZ as extra and we'll pay it against principal before we even make a draw against the, um, the bond funds.
Mr. Abdullah had, you didn't answer Rebecca's question. If, if the kids had to be excavated out of the school for some reason, would they go to Wilkinson?
Um, no, there, there's, there's opportunities where there's, uh, portable classrooms. You could get trailers, they've done that before. Um, years ago, where they had, uh, portable classrooms. We don't anticipate that, because we're doing infrastructure, right? So, um, boilers and piping and, and roofing, they could work around that. You know, there might be an area where they could isolate at the time, it might be, you know, move all the students to one side while the, the part of the roof is renovated on this side, and then they could move people around. So we don't anticipate moving students to Wilkinson.
Chair, Ms. Thompson has her hand up. I don't know if you can see her.
Gloria?
I, I can't, thank you. Uh, Gloria Thompson, go ahead. Angel, Angel, can I get you to put up the project cost detail again? I think it was page five, he said.
Page five, yep. Hang on one second.
My other questions were all answered, but I still have a question about this.
Page five? This is page five, right here?
Uh, no, it was.
Page nineteen?
Yeah, maybe it was nineteen.
Page nineteen, hang on. He.
And can you enlarge that, Mr. Abdullah?
Yep, all right. Yep, right here, page nineteen.
The page I wanna see. Okay, do you see where it says, um, nine million, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty? Did we have something that changed? Because my sheet says seven-hundred-and-thirty. I know it's only twenty dollars, but I want all of our figures to be the same.
Angel, take this. Gloria, amazing catch. I'm gonna look forward to having meetings with you in the future. You're great. No, congratulations. So I had, um, under the roof replacement for the childhood, I had, um, had it listed at three-thirty-five instead of three-fifty-five. I caught that today, cause the columns weren't equal.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is it fifty-five or thirty-five?
It's fifty-five, yeah.
Okay.
Nice catch, though. So if I ever need something approved for it, I might give you a quick call. Before a board meeting, that's for sure.
I, you know, I just, I'm a figures person and I wanted to make sure that all of our figures were the same.
Good for you. Thank you.
So, do you want me to scroll a little bit more, Gloria?
No, I have it now. I, I, now I know where the difference was, and I noted it on my sheet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark Holcomb has his hand up.
Oh, Mark, go ahead.
Okay, Michael, now that the, uh, Mrs. Beaver brought up the warranty, how long is a warranty on a job like this?
Yeah, Mark, so, um, for equipment, the equipment has manufacturer's warranty. We warranty all of our work for one full year, and that's why we come back and check on it. It's twofold. One, to make sure that we're helping you run your own building. You know, we're doing some pretty major overhauls to your, you're gonna have a building automation system that your people will understand. So for a full year, we will warranty all the work, and then at the end of that year, it'll, it'll, so, we'll carry the warranties, but it'll carry over to equipment warranty. And those usually run from anywhere from one to five years. The roofs will have a twenty-year warranty on them.
The roofs what?
The roofs will have a, a, I'm sorry, fifteen to a twenty-year warranty on them. It depends on how much we pay. You can buy extra warranty on the roofs.
Okay.
Yeah.
As, as long as no one else comes in to work on them, right?
Yeah, we put something up there. There's a lot, yeah. But again, when you work with, you know, construction management companies, and like, say, we do a great job on the spawn and you're happy with us, you know, we would always tell you, in the future, if you have a problem or question, call us. If, you know, if there's a problem with the roof, call us first, because we have a little bit more leverage with the contractors, the subcontractors.
And Michael, they, if we called you, we wouldn't void the warranty on a roof, correct?
No, no, naturally not. We would be acting as an agent on behalf of the school.
Okay.
Um, who can't I see? Rebecca?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing, seeing no other hands. Mary, you're up.
Okay, so recommend the Board of Education approve the draft preliminary qualification for November bond as is presented. Um, the motion was made by Beth Scott, seconded by Rebecca Chambliss, so we will go through roll call. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-all.
Yay. Oh, sorry, guys. Sorry about that.
Okay, and I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right.
You can let Mark have it.
Yeah, I'll do a yay for that.
Yeah.
On a pillow break.
Yeah, can we have a roll call, please, Mary?
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes, and I thank you to the Board of Education.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes adjournment at eight-twenty.
Yeah, we did something great tonight. You guys have a good night.
Good night. Good night.